Thank you all.
Heads on, to be honest.
Is that better? So, I'll leave my desk. Well, thank you all for having me come and talk to you today about your fitness center. This has been a years-long journey, apparently, for your community, and I work with WNC Bridge Foundation. We serve eighteen westernmost counties of western North Carolina, starting over from Burke County all the way to the end of the state to Cherokee County. We work in each county. We try to use a lot of different data points. In your county, I've recently participated in a county health assessment that happens about every three years, right? And this was in 2021. So, our foundation was looking for ways to improve health in all of the counties where we work, but we're not health experts. You all are. And you particularly have an amazing interim health department director here with Donna Stevens, who shared time with the president of our foundation, his name is Mr. Scott Buchanan. And I'm sorry he's not here with us today. We had another event going on in another county north of here when we had scheduled this, so I'm happy to bring his good tidings to you all. But we started working with Donna on the different projects. Really, our goal for the foundation is not only to make grants from our foundation, but it's also to seek resources at the state level, really, and bring them westward. Some of those resources are available. It just takes connection points and find the right method to get those resources here. And again, going back to Donna Stevens, I'm sorry to call on you, I'm sorry. She met with Scott and I and went over the county health assessment and some big rocks, some big goals that the county has. And one of those was to increase the number of medical professionals in the community. We have an urgent care center that was going through some changes. We don't have a hospital. We have other health needs. And so she was really looking for funds to support health practitioners. So, we jump forward to about a year. There is a program through the North Carolina Office of Rural Health that does provide funding for certain medical professionals in rural areas. I'm greatly simplifying this process. This grant application process is tedious. It took Donna and I about two months of solid work, and she did that in addition to her duties. I know she probably wouldn't tell you that, but I will. And through that, we really got to know Grand County really well. So, we failed in that application, and we did get funding from the Office of Rural Health for two nurse practitioners for two years. Hopefully, we can renew again because, of course, Donna and her team, Megan, obviously, one of those nurse practitioners have really knocked it out of the park. For example, they might have said, "Well, we think that we might serve 100 people doing this type of thing." Tobacco prevention, I believe, is one of them, having increased health outcomes in different areas. Well, just about every area, and they don't know that I know this, but just about every area that they applied in, they just about doubled the number of people they said that they would serve in every area, to the extent that when they had to reapply this year for the second year of funding, they asked Donna to redo what they had promised because they did want to burn out practitioners, really. They were like, "That's great. We want to serve all the people, but we want to keep the medical people we have." So, just again, going through this process, we learned about the community's interest in a fitness center. I am a construction person. I'm sort of a boring business lady. But Donna had been part, or I'm not sure about the timeline, that there was a task force that you all had established, and they had all the right kinds of community members represented. You had folks from the school. You had folks from the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians. You had folks from public health, the county health department, on and on. You had all the right people in the room sort of dreaming up, "How can we make this fitness center happen?" So, they did all the right things, including your county. When your county got interested in this, they did a really important thing. They deed it over land to this project, so it gave it a head start, right? So, that's often the biggest issue in any kind of capital development, is the site. Who owns the site? Who has site control? And your county just did it all right by the book without even knowing it. It's just so beautiful. So, we went to the task force. Donna invited me to come, and we heard, we were just talking outside about some of the process. One of our favorites that we learned about at the foundation was Ms. Angie Knight, who recently retired superintendent of schools, had done a survey about what the children wanted to see. So, they responded all the grade levels. And one story I share as part of this is you have a 15-year-old, probably a 17-year-old now, at the time, that had responded to the survey that said their dream was they wanted to either go to or have their own pool party, but they'd never been to one. And so, for a 15-year-old to want that, we've just, you know, in the community response, Bridge Foundation, foundations are really financial institutions. Whatever their cause is, they really just handle money, and they're really good at working with other funders. So, we had met with Donna. She was very brave. She came to present to our board last year about all the initiatives. Megan came this year on the fly. She found out basically the morning of the meeting and came to speak to our board. This sort of all resulted in your feasibility study that the task force had commissioned. The feasibility study revealed that this project was a definite possibility for the land that had been deeded over to it, and the cost was going to be about $30 to $31 million. So, after we got out of the sticker shop, we started looking for the resources to make that happen. We know some of our constructions here. We have a rural area that we live in. Our tax base is constricted, and honestly, we have other needs in the community that need to be supported as well. So, we started talking to other funders, you know, representatives at the state. And again, how you all, from the very beginning, laid this out in your vision, was really perfect for what the capital that they want to be investing in, rural areas. You're not asking for a grant to fix a problem, right? You're asking for a grant to prevent future problems in that you want your community to be able to access a fitness center and all of the amenities that it offers. The walking track, the bowling lanes, the pickleball courts, all of the things that you all haven't imagined really are a possibility for different spots of funding. So, fast forward to this fall. We found this application process through the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond. They really excel at moving capital to certain areas for projects. And they started in 2024 a rural investment collaborative project. We applied. Your project was accepted. And I'm here to report that actually, it was mentioned this month in one of their recent publications as one of the most promising projects to come out of the 25 in the cohort, again, because of all the right things that you all have done in the beginning. So, this is the part where I like to say, "Show me the money," right? So, this is a lot of funding that we're trying to get to, to build this. You did the big leap of deeding over the land. There is a presentation I shared with Mr. Cody and Ms. Smith about what's called a capital stack. So, you have access to state foundations and funders that do have a lot of capital that they want to invest in in prevention, right? Prevention's worth of a pound of cure. So, they're very interested in your project. We've talked about it briefly with them here and there. They understand that you're going through completing your financial documents and getting those in order with your audits. You have a new county manager and a new county commissioner. So, really, this summer, we're going to be approaching those funders. They've got something that you all are still interested in from the original ask. We hope of 30 million. We do have interest in between $14 and $16 million of investment. And then, the other exciting piece to this, that still leaves $14 to $16 million to figure out, right? It's a pretty big balance. Unfortunately, fortunately, we had a storm that caused a lot of chaos in western North Carolina and a lot of damage. And we have different financial institutions that are investing in our regions to try to help us rebuild and recover. Now, fortunately, Grand County wasn't hurt as badly as it probably could have been. Took a little spin there, thank goodness. But you were impacted. There was a lot of flooding. There was a lot of home damage. And one thing that your county needs is sort of like that fitness center, community center, that if things go bad, or you need to shelter, or you need places to shower, for example, or get supplies, where you all have that located next to the health department is just so brilliant, right? You're developing a campus or a complex, if you will. So, the other $14 million, Truist Bank, the senior vice president of Truist Bank in North Carolina, Mr. Rob Garrett-Fallow, heard about your project from one of the WNC Bridge Foundation board members, Mr. David Hayes. He was the recently retired marketing president. So, as they were discussing this project, Mr. Garrett-Fallow set up a meeting with your county administration just to talk about what debt financing looks like and some of the options available to you. And I shared with the leadership that Truist, again, helping North Carolina rebuild from the storm, had set aside more than $700 million to help North Carolina rebuild. But there's a time limit on that because we're recovering from a disaster. They don't want to just set this money aside and let it multiply in the bank account. They want to invest in areas. And fortunately for you, you have a shovel-ready project for them that they're interested in financing in some way. And again, that's for your leadership to decide. Again, Bridge Foundation, we just bring their resources. You all decide what to do with those. So, you drive that part. We just bring them, and you all meet with Truist on your own. And there's already been some communications with Mr. Garrett-Fallow and the staff. And I would recommend just continuing that because you're also interested in some other capital projects, like a justice center, other needs that might be coming up as you all sort of move into this next future. So, that's a lot of information. I know that we have some next steps. Do you have any questions right off, or anything that I might skip? No?
I can't think of anything you skipped. We won't know exactly on the amount we can get in grants until we apply.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. So, as Donna said, we won't know the exact amount until we apply, and we need to wait until your audits are complete because those are one of the required documents for their grant application. So, as soon as those are complete, you have everything else in order. We can go ahead and apply for those. And again, you know, they are already aware of your projects, and those are the larger foundations in North Carolina that are considered state-wide funders, where a regional funder, again, they have access to capital, and they make large investments in this type of thing that they're trying to create here. Questions?
Any questions? So, I want to thank you, Donna, for all of the hard work on these projects. And I hope that we can maybe come forward very soon. We did just get our 123 audit. We said we'd come forward. So, I hope that in the next few months, we'll have that, so.
That's great. And you know, the ladies, they understand that. So, I mentioned the rural investment collaborative. Of the 40 that started, only 25 completed. I think it might be 24. Things happen, right? I mean, a storm happens. Just things change. But you have all of the fundamentals in place. Like, you've already done all of the hard part. This is just sort of getting things over the finish line. I know that you have other needs, and again, you're a charge of that, not us, but you've already done the hard part in making access to the capital. All right, we've done all of my contact information. What will happen going forward is we already have a list of these funders that are interested. I'll go back and make sure we have all the contact information. She said that you all were a grant writer and a project manager in the county. So, again, these are all the right things. There are no gatekeepers. You can proceed as you want to and get the things that you need. And just a note, state funders are really looking for counties like yours that are rural, but are really interested in building your own infrastructure in ways that you want that benefit your community. So, I wouldn't let these two projects be the only ones that you move going forward. Maybe not 30 million, but you know, there are other school needs. I'm sure that you have those. Are always evolving and changing. So, the funders that you're working with or you will work with, don't let that be the only time. Does that make sense? Like, they want to work with you going forward. Well, again, thanks so much for letting Bridge Foundation come alongside you all. I know it's a big lift, but again, you've done the hard part, and you're really excited to work with the Federal Reserve. And that's an ongoing project. The meeting that we have next week with them is understanding communications for projects like ours and know that you will have access to all of that information, like the links that I had sent you all earlier.
And I'll go ahead and introduce you to Jason Murray. He is our project manager.
Oh, perfect. Great. Well, your reputation precedes you. They were really excited, so Jay, you're with them.
Thank you. Pleasure to meet you.
It's great to meet you too.
So, we thank you so much for presenting that. It helps. I know I've heard it before, but it helps for them here, I'm sure. And so, as soon as we give them forward, we definitely, I'm sure Murray will be in touch with you.
That's great. And again, you know, you all drive that ship. If we can provide technical assistance on grant applications, I know that sounds a little funny, probably a little amazing, grant writer. It's just that we're a funder, and we'll know the things that they're looking for, so we can kind of share some technical advice about that. But you know, you would own that. The money is all of yours. The Bridge Foundation wouldn't have a part in that. Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it.
We're happy to have you all to do the workshops. So, we will call the Grand County Board of Practitioners, the board and chief, and assess the need to get any other about. The orders, members of each county board commissioners are not here by their, you know, the state. There was a, this actual board conflict situation and the appearance of such conflict. And we are instructed to express our participation in any matter coming before this board. County leaders, there is no respect in which there is an opportunity for appearance of such conflict. We'll have Mr. Cody for me to send you the information.
That's great. Good to hear. And just thank you for this course study that you can give us. Father, we're just so thankful for everything you do for us, especially the gifts, the blessings, and opportunities you allow us to have. Father, we ask that you just continue just to be rich. Just give us the patience and the concern. Most of all, it's that one needs to need her. Father, we just ask that you just go as. Father, just be with us in the coming days. Most of all, Father, we ask, be with our families that receive the deal and just continue just to touch and heal their minds. Father, just be with them. And, Father, we're so thankful to be blessed and to be given that you just showed the promise, can. And we just ask that you just continue just to watch over them. In your precious home, this day, Jesus Christ, we pray.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sure there are three additions under Act of Twenty to the tri-countment update. Sure, Department of Reunification document applicable. Then we will contract the Forest Service.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes. And then we have a motion to approve the minutes for the workshop.
Motion to approve.
So, at this time, we will close the regular. So, I'll be a motion to close the regular. We have a public hearing for the school in 2025, 2026, budget. So, we would, um, carry on and explain to the law. As we're able to continue this, I will inform our management.
I'm sure we will submit you the budget in its term form. I'll let this car under detail, uh, on the current budget. And then, after adding that, our public comment of the year.
So, we have a grand counting budget for 25, 26, it's $25,491,432. I'll stay there and give one for Mike. So, the proposed Grand County budget for 2025, 2026 is $25,491,432. And the average tax rate is $50 cents for $100 at full valuation. And the revenue neutral rate, that's 24.57 for 100 at full valuation. We're established that the initial tax rates from the 20th grand for this whole year, 2025, 26, there is no decrease from last year. Rates, uh, that the 20 cents for $100 tax rate will be used to fund general appropriations. The general fund itself has its $23,723,591. But this budget, the remaining $1,766,531 is not special revenue expense. It is about a split, it's like our sources of revenue and our expenditure items. But it's present form, we'll stress out other suggestions. Do you have any questions for the board? So, we will, I'll like to make a motion to, um, wait while I ask for the budget in advance.
We will have a, once we command a budget.
So, we will go to the public comment, but must go back to the minutes. So, I will close the, um, the, 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 the. Wait, that was a radio.
So, maybe.
So, now, I'll share to you. Uh, delaying the adoption of the fiscal budget to our, um, service. Have a special. All my devotion, I will continue to see it until, um, June 2020. You just, I'll be thinking of the chances of the last. So, if I can, I'll make a motion to take the adoption of the budget. I'll just go back. So, when we are closed, this right now, being in the public hearing for CDG, CDG's brackets, we'll have a motion.
So, I'll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a closeout public hearing for Grand County's FY 2040 Future Development Block Grant, CBG, Coronavirus, Coronavirus or CD Program, Grant Number 20, Tag B, Tag 3514. Purpose of this public hearing is to discuss the program's performance, allow citizens of Grand County an opportunity to make any comments and close out the CBG, CBG project. In December 2020, the county received $900,000 and U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, for another CBG funding from the North Carolina Department of Commerce for Grant 20, Tag B, Tag 3514. There were five activities. Proposed project activities for 52.1% benefit to LMA persons and include funds to the following subrecipient programs. Number one, Grand County Senior Center, expand the commercial kitchen to better accommodate yield on wheel services for seniors. Grace Place, number two, Community Kitchen. To expand the commercial kitchen and purchase some equipment to better accommodate safe storage, handling, and preparation of community deals. Number three, Grand County Schools, funding to provide equipment, supplies, materials needed for remote learning. Number four, the Imagine Hub, provide coffee machine, working space, and internet services to those in the community that need a space to work or for remote learning. And number five, Grand County EMS, CBG CD, funding to provide new training equipment for EMS workers adequately trained and prepared. Program activities are completed. The grand funds are approximately 90% expended. $413,172 of the grand funds were spent towards neighborhood facilities, $393,667.88 towards public services, and $90,000 towards administration fees. Final repossession of funds, the amount of $7,200, will be submitted to RED with our REED, with the CBG closeout documents following this public hearing. $2,760.12 of unutilized grand funds will be deobligated and returned to the Rural Development Economic Division. This is because the process to submit and get approval for a budget revision to move unused funds to another project activity is lengthy and uncertain. Project team would like to officially close out the project, having laid in additional, weighted on additional funds from the Senior Center generator for over a year. The $2,760.12 unused funds are a result of the EMS, Grand County School, and the Senior Center project invoices coming in slightly under budget. This has been a successful project and remaining compliance with the federal requirement of the regulations associated with funding. And I'd just like to thank everybody for all the help of the community to get these projects completed. The school, Ms. Michelle and Grace Place, really helpful. Things were smooth, and of course, Senior Center and the other areas have worked. So, really good job, great work that was completed, good stuff for the community. Then I would ask, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to give, um, just a little comment. First, I wanted to say thank you. I understand fully the long and arduous task that it has been to give 2021 to 2025 and get all of that money spent and everybody made happy. So, thank you for sticking with it because I understand that. But for the funds that were given to Grace Place, I thought you might like to know that we took us some time to finally get the project finished up and to open the doors, and the kitchen has been open a little over a year now. And in that time, we, every single week, feed half of the population of Robbinsville every week. We feed between 300 and 350 people every single week. If you add up all the times that we have done that just in the last year, since we've had that new kitchen open, which you helped us be able to do, we have fed every single person, man, woman, boy, and girl in Grand County, two and a half meals over the year. It has made a huge difference in your community. And we thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. But thank you, Michelle.
Thank you for the work that you do and what you provide. You kept the price standing on.
This is a wonderful, anytime we have a chance to come, I involve Karen a little bit. They have a really good parental time out there in the kitchen. But thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Other comment? Okay, in order to do this, the commissioners will adopt the resolution and close it out. I'll read the resolution, then after we come out, you can entertain them, accept the resolution. And I did provide there are two copies. Madam Chair, if you decide on one. Resolution authorizing to close out of Grand County responsible for fairness needs project under the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural and Economic Development Division can be a thought of Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program, Grant Number 20, Tag B, Tag 3514. Whereas Grand County is participating in the community development block grant Coronavirus Program with assistance provided under the Coronavirus A Relief and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act, Public Law 116, Act 136, and awarded the DOC, Department of Commerce, under Title I of the United States Housing and Community Development Act 1974, as amended and administered by the North Carolina Department of Commerce. And whereas Grand County has completed the scheduled activities identified in the grant as approved by the Rural Economic Development Division. And whereas Grand County has conducted the required public hearing of closeout of CBG Grant Number 20, Tag B, Tag 3514. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Grand County Board of Commissioners of Robbinsville, North Carolina, that. Grand County Board Commissioners hereby formally takes this action to close out the aforementioned community development block grant project. Closeout performance report will be reviewed and executed by the board chair on behalf of the county, which I have right here and I'll bring to you, Madam Chair, the closeout performance report. The resolution shall become effective upon its adoption and approval, or adopted and approved this seventeenth day of June twenty twenty five in Robbinsville, North Carolina. If there were no other public comments, that's all.
Thanks, guys. So I'll make a motion to close, close the public hearing. I'll also make a motion to accept the CBG CD grant. Okay, now it's like next, uh, if I want to talk to this, I'm showing you more. Uh, next up will be the rest of the evening, and we'll be doing a clearing and meeting in forty.
Good afternoon, I wanted to uh, meet with you guys today to update you on spending from this fiscal year twenty four, twenty five with the upcoming settlement. Specifically, the spending authorization resolution number eight, which was passed on August fourteenth, twenty twenty four. In that spending authorization resolution, we allocated fifty thousand dollars to Hype. Um, and they were, they used that full amount to plan. Uh, these funds partially covered the salaries for treatment and health professionals, probably a lot, you know, some holiday, who worked at the elementary and the middle school. Uh, they were always being critical in identifying students who might be struggling with or who may be affected by students and she was serving all health providers. We also allocated one thousand dollars for modeling for most net first support interns. Doing for students from Western and other nearby colleges to come to Robbinsville. Unfortunately, no interns participated during this fiscal year or the last one. However, the funding wasn't saved back in county schools for twenty four, twenty five. In the um, third strategy was the post of predict response thing, which includes the community of patient care program. And the post of grace response thing through Grand County Health Department. This program was allocated one hundred forty three thousand dollars, I'm thinking, or excuse me, one hundred forty three thousand five hundred fifty two dollars and thirty four cents. As of today, sixty three thousand one hundred and one dollars and four cents in that way to the end. The primary reason for that is staff challenges, uh, which include Ray, who became an agent, was a sales team navigator, left into silver. And the position was not very hard for him until February. And pretty much it's evidence that that position was filled, that I myself had to go out for a while and hold it. So that comes for why there's not much money left us for that. Um, the community language to care staff, which still may still economic impact, we took in thirteen new clients, followed. Up with fourteen existing ones, made over twenty nine rolls to such excuse treatment and other income reduction services. And distributing essential supplies, we gave out a long song, um, eight recorded kids were given their clear clients, meaning. That were currently receiving for services from a C O C support program at the time. Uh, twenty plus were distributed at recent community event. Meeting, which there were several were given out at well meaning health department. And many more kids were given to community members, not categorizes classes, because they weren't receiving the services from the C O C support team at that time. Um, at least four over six reversals have been recorded using the kits that we gave them down, which speaks to the work that some how to use resources from the community. Uh, we allocated four thousand dollars for for private life services, which was which were to be targeted towards the assets involved parents, but they were already the only one. And however, no classes were given this year or next year, this year or last year, and that was the plan to remain as the end, that four thousand. Uh, for the Western North Carolina East Project, referred to in link up, they were allocated twenty five thousand dollars in our last thing in opposition resolution. With five thousand dollars that remained in the standard. The funding helped support, they're all going hard work in Grand County. Originally, they were offering legal services here for one day a week, but thanks to this study, they were able to expand to a second day per week. Significantly increasing their rates and availability for less than. Link up had four hundred twenty five per premises for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Uh, twenty three organizations were reported to link up style and a hundred and eight over six commercial kits were given out with their home. The trailer recorded community needs center at, at Five Point Center received their full thirty four thousand dollar allocation. This was to support our and any zero point five, both on the twinkle and pierce support specialists, Allison Carpenter, who started in twenty twenty four. And the files also supported her recovery house. Right now, trailer is running several recovery groups, which include. Mara was his medication assisted recovery office, we've strictly reduced stigma around medica, or medications for everybody who's disorder. Uh, they're called a smart recovery groups and also R recovery twelve step groups. These are all vital in supporting people at various stages of recovery and help, helping to build a community support here in Grand County. Uh, we refer to your report from Five Point Center, I'm forgetting if you guys don't want to copy that. I'm just gonna go through and hit some colleagues in their beautifully presented report that Michelle and Austin made, so thank you for that, it's awesome. Um, their programming activities and accomplishments, they provided peer support. Offered a stage to the human free space for community members. They created and finalized a comprehensive MS student plan with a copy implementation strategy. They satisfied the majority of companies for upcoming anti student campaign base, including education, club messaging and community engagement events. They have partnered with B S S to offer families a more welcoming visitation environment for B S S parents and. B S S involved parents in their children and foster care. Uh, they collaborated with B S S and Life Force Pregnancy Center to facilitate. They facilitate parenting classes focused on nurturing skills and family recovery. Uh, they participate in recovery and work initiatives to hopefully, you know, help remain employment barriers for people. They established working relationship with a bad condition or status. Uh, coordinated for the health program to create youth ladder between these subjects, speaking up for my first audience. They also um, supply clients with essential items. They continue to support the development training of other peer support specialists now. Uh. Of their thirty four thousand dollars that they were allocated, a small portion of only was to spend. They are, are considering to use the plans with latest not allowing them to reserve resources specifically for the community and stability. And ensure how to have deployment. Uh, in your report funding, is there a campaign um, plan that they have for their anti stigma campaign? Which is recovery is now in the stigma addiction. Outmost, yeah, they're probably on objective implement that, including their colon and their quadrant. Um, actually, I was there, they served one hundred fifty seven people in the fiscal year. They provided three to a hundred twenty one people, they provided clothing to fifty nine people. And they had one hundred six recovered resources. They provided peer support to sixty people and recovery coach services for four. And they provided their car reduction services, twenty nine. Um, we're really, really happy to be a partner in with Q O Recovery Community, Community Center, uh, with the upcoming settlement. Uh, currently, I'm here for the dive party, sent in by September twenty seventh. For the annual financial reporting and the annual impact reporting, so I'm working on that right now and getting that ready to be sent out. Um, and I'm meeting with the everyone, so I'm taking requests to take, to make sure I have all the information that they need in their agents. Um, going to let me submit drafts and then reviews out and help me in case I needed a um, revival in any way. Uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. I have, or actually can, because we're in a need with. A spending authorization resolution that includes everything that the strategic planning work group, the rent handle. Um, all strategic planning work group members were invited to provide input on how the money for twenty five, twenty six is allocated. Um. Grand County was, will be given or transferred to our revenue, one hundred eighty thousand dollars for fiscal year coming about twenty six. And I can always tell my folks. Um. So I can give you a kind of a overview and then read the spending authorization resolution. So. They recommended to allocate thirty four thousand two hundred dollars to Hype, which is nineteen percent of the total. Which is the same percentage they received last year. Um, the officer for one hundred sixty five thousand two hundred and one dollars and four cents, which is fifty six percent of the total. Just same percentage they received last year, plus the remaining spent funds. But that totally includes this revaluation and what was left of the plan. Uh, they recommended to allocate forty two thousand four hundred sixteen to Hype. And that is nine point seven percent of the total, which is seventeen thousand four hundred sixty dollars. Plus the five thousand spent from last year. And then an additional twenty percent correction because. We got off with our spending authorization resolutions and our invoices from them. So that twenty thousand dollars is a correction from twenty twenty three to twenty four. And then from twenty four, twenty five, so that just makes sense for your ideal track. And they recommended to provide twenty eight thousand eight hundred dollars to Q O Recovery Community Standard. And that's thirteen percent based allocation, which is the same amount they received last year. Plus an additional thirty percent to support the existing plastic thing rates that are holding in their recovery center. So that total is two hundred sixty thousand, six hundred sixty one dollars and four cents. Um, I will read the spending authorization resolution, present that to you guys. Um. To see if you guys remember what we have to make of it or not. Um, I have to recall, I don't know if it's more than the average of yours, so. A resolution of other county and brand to direct expenditure of ongoing settlement. Whereas Grand County has a national settlement agreement with companies engaged in the manufacturing, distribution and dispensing of opioids. Whereas the allocation needs to record in a vast semi privileged national settlement agreements and bank purchasing resolutions. Referred to U S opioid settlement funds are governed by the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments on. Pursuits relating to settlement of opioid litigation for her to use the M O A. And the settlement agreement for additional funds, additional settlement of opioid litigation, which is referred to as S A A. Whereas Grand County encouraged the opioid settlement funds pursuant to these national, national settlement agreements. And deposit the opioid settlement funds in a separate special ready fund as required by section eighty of the M O A. Whereas section E six of the M O A states that divorce the opioid settlement. The local government's operating body must adopt a resolution that indicates that there is an authorization for expenditure of opioid settlement funds. And states a specific strategy or strategies that county or many of the county intends to fund pursuant to optioning or optioning. Using the item letter or number in exhibit A or exhibit B to identify each funding strategy. And states the amount dedicated to each strategy for a specific period of time. Now therefore, be it resolved in alignment with the M C M O A and as stated here, Grand County authorizes the expenditure of opioid settlement funds as a topic. First authorized strategy, the name of the strategy is early interventions. The strategy is included in exhibit A and the item letter or number in exhibit A to the M O A is number six. The amount authorized for the strategy is thirty four thousand two hundred dollars. The period of time which expenditure might take place is start date of June eighteen, twenty twenty five through end date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. The description of the current project or activity is funds to cover the cost of two school beds, point five and teens. Use support counselors contract bid for projects to support user risk or substance use or affected uh, family members of disputes orders. And the provider for that strategy would be Hype. The second authorized strategy, name of the strategy is code for the response team. The strategy is included in exhibit A, the item letter or number in exhibit A to the M O A is number eight. The amount authorized for the strategy is one hundred sixty five thousand dollars, one hundred sixty five thousand two hundred and one dollars and four cents. The period of time during which the expenditure might take place is start date of June eighteen, twenty twenty five through end date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. The description of the program project activity is an existing community language care, has everybody's response program. Currently based at Grand County Public Health Department that supports people who use drugs, a normal history of drug use. And people seeking treatment or recovery to help care social services, harm reduction and treatment. It's to support two full time staff and operators and program expenses. And to coordinate referral based outreach to overdose survivors. The provider for that strategy would be the Grand County Department of Health. The third authorized strategy, name of the strategy is recovery support services. The strategy is included in exhibit A, the item letter or number in exhibit A to the M O A is number three. The amount authorized for the strategy is forty two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. The period of time during which standard term might take place is a start date of June eighteen, twenty twenty five through end date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Description of the correct project directors is to support wing cap to maintain and expand. Harm reduction services in Grand County, including providing resources for staff time travel. And to aid in the purchase and distribution of the long song and other supplies. In order to provide support to leverage efforts or any contribution in the county budget agency. And the provider would be Western North Carolina H H Project. The fourth authorized strategy, the name of the strategy is recovery support services. Strategy is included in exhibit A. The item letter or number in exhibit A is number three. The amount authorized for the strategy would be twenty eight thousand eight hundred dollars. The period of time during which the expenditure might take place is a start date of June eighteen, twenty twenty five through end date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. The description of the program project activity is to support trailer recovery community center. A program currently based at Five Point Center that supports people who use drugs and or related history of drug use. And people seeking treatment or recovery to help care social services, harm reduction and treatment. It's to support one point five F T peer support specialists and program expenses. And supporting a referral based outreach and stem production efforts. And supporting a referral-based outreach and stem production efforts. The provider would be five wind center. The total dollar amount of O K O settlement funds appropriated across the above name and authorized strategies. Is two hundred seventy thousand six hundred sixty one dollars and four cents adopted this seventeenth day of June twenty twenty five. And you'll note that um, the decision was made to reroute funds previously allocated. To Sunny and Pringle Jenkins for the proper life classes uh, to other education. And she provided input on that stating that she hadn't had any parents. Um, want to take those classes for the past years. So she added input that we should reroute that to other education. So that's what we did to that. And then uh, the group recommended to reroute funds. For to the schools for to reimburse moms for the school social work interns. Also since there was one in the last fiscal year or the previous.
Thank you so much for reading all that.
You're welcome.
So. Clarity is that resolution, I'll be ready to read that. Yes, I saw my question to go through this uh, standard resolution for your O K O settlement.
I'll say the question.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for sharing. And now it's on my track for the parts of the ministry of the government.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair. I'd like to get everybody to go through my uh, report and shoot it out of copy over your desk. Uh, pretty much no change. One through three, obviously, and I'm still working on the site for the justice center. Uh, budget for number two in the jail and then funding for the E M S dating on number three. Starting with number four. Is two forty three. If you turn your attention to the slides behind you there, I'll run through. Some real quick photos, obviously, we're just starting not a lot, but uh, you have some updates. This is our agenda. Obviously introduction of the the program that we have for the health trust really looking at two four three or branch and sixty six eight total road. And I will offer for some questions or comments up here. Um, this is just covers our introduction and overview of the project. Uh, it almost mirrors the C D G state requirements for both those projects. Uh, first project, or at least what we got started with first is uh, this little orientation on two forty three or ranch road in Roswell. To uh, down in Sweetwater, bottom of the mountain. As you can see on the left, foundation is complete. We are ready to start framing. Uh, the right side shows you some smoothing of. Uh, inside, which will eventually be the crawl space. Um. I went in today and they do have a loan package on site, so we're gonna start trying to maybe frame something separate. So the project's moving good on two four three or branch. I feel like we're certainly. On schedule with that to go forward. Then once we start doing the framing for the project and obviously signing. I'll show more elevation views, shots from each side of the house like I did on the previous projects, but. These are the only two slides. Again, this is up today and hasn't. This morning quite frankly. Next project is sixty six A tolla, a little bit further behind on it, obviously for the rain. And being able to get the hazmat, there's orientation for it. House. Is on the left. And then the right shows you where we had the asbestos removal. There's a secret sheet for that had to be removed out. That was completed on Monday. Um, and so they cleared that. I was doing the air clearance before anybody could go in. And uh, I went out today. There is a trap go on site to start demo. And it's probably okay to do some of that in the rain, but obviously it becomes a real muddy mess. They may not be doing too much, but it's okay. It's starting to do the demo in the rain. So it's looking good. It's starting to demo this week. On six A tolla. And the summary of where we are, obviously, with the beginning dates, two four three or range is showing about twenty five percent complete. Still looking at September for completion. And with the um, ticked up a little bit from last month, sixty six A tolla is. Um, sixty six, or excuse me, six percent complete. And still looking at November to December for. That one completed. Any questions, comments on the two projects? All right. Um. And that's four and five. I'm six is the new branch subdivision. There was an updated uh, M O A agreement between the R D A and the board of education that was just forwarded to. Uh, our attorneys to review. So we'll still probably talk a little bit more about that in our meeting tomorrow. Um, then the last item is item seven. It's interesting. I I noticed the town does their own striking the hood lights there in front of the town hall. So I approached Chad about materials, like also good material and was talking about getting that, as you can see, for our parking lots. And uh, through manager Cody has approached me about uh, health department needing it for some of their accreditation, accreditation for their parking lot. But I worked out both ways. We weren't paying. And I'm gonna work with uh, our maintenance to try to get started the health department and get some of the A D A parking spaces. Back where they can actually tell that they're there in line, some of the parking lot and get them set up and then. Early goes well, not too feasibility wise, we'll try to. Expand our facilities to get some more of those stripped out. We'll do that internally instead of trying to get it at all. Work forward to that. Really, it's other than that, that's all I've got. I think there's some questions to me, but I appreciate it.
And next will be this part of the five.
In front of you, you should add some of the. Document titles, finding points of discussion for tonight's meeting is for the period ending day thirty first of twenty twenty five. The first thing on our agenda tonight is amendment number sixteen. And appropriation changes for for funds that will reappropriate entry departmental into the sheriff's department for giving this to the market. Five thousand eight hundred and three dollars and seven and four cents. And that's just to get their lines in in the correct position to handle this whole year. And we also received the veterans N C D M B A grant program when we were uh, just received that. And it was important in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty eight dollars and ninety seven cents. We also received the recreation use sports grant. It was awarded in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. And then D S S needed some budget adjustments to complete this whole year in the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy one dollars and thirty four cents. Those you just need to make sure they're part of the annual transfers. So the the only two that had impact on the revenue was the veterans grant and the recreation use sports grant. So amendment number sixteen, um, the total amount of decreases to the appropriations was eighty one thousand seventy five dollars and eighteen cents. Increases was one hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars and fifteen cents. And the difference between those two numbers is the thirty eight thousand two hundred and eighty eight dollars ninety seven cents for each increase the revenues. Uh, with the approval for that.
I'm hoping to approve the amendment sixteen.
I'll say. All. And then so I've been to on the L G C. We're continuing to have those check-ins with our uh, L G C coach, Tim Griffin monthly. They did uh, receive a copy of our draft budget. It was first reviewed and upgraded by L G C. And the audit update, as you know, our of our last meetings, we filed fiscal year twenty two, twenty three audit. Um, it was actually filed with the L G C on its end of this month. So now we're just pending L G C's review and approval. And as soon as that's done, an engagement letter. For the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, some being entered into with our engine counting. And. So we're just getting that approval before we can upgrade to the next contract with our two young.
I believe you said you have all the numbers ready to, pretty much ready for the input.
Twenty three, twenty four, we have, we have files built. We're adjusting some of those files just based on the knowledge that we gained. And through this audit, but we, we are in good standing for for those numbers to be submitted. So. As soon as that engagement letter comes out, we can get on a trial balance and then we'll continue to work on those standards. Hopefully we'll have it all ready to send at the end of the time. And. There's an income statement in your packet. There's a copy attached. The income that was received in May was one million sixty six thousand eight hundred and ninety five dollars and thirty five cents. Brands are here today totaled to nineteen million eight hundred and seven thousand one hundred and fifty two dollars and five cents. You also have an expenditure statement included in your packet. Along with a detailed departmental report that shows you our ideal percentage versus actual percentages. And we, you are keeping a very close eye on budgets. We're right here at the end of the year and so far we have everybody blind and not a lot of anyone's goal of the budget, just. To keep that in good standing. Uh, as far as our expenditures for the month of May, I don't know, it was one million nine hundred and twenty three thousand one hundred and thirty seven dollars and forty two cents. Our year to date expenditures are twenty million two hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and eighty three dollars and thirty two cents. As far as our property tax collections, you have a May report attached in your packet. Our collections um, for the current year, uh, our collective in May is thirty six thousand two hundred and six dollars and three cents. Collections for prior year, so our collective in May is twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty one dollars and twenty nine cents. Our total poverty taxes for twenty twenty four and has been collected is eight million nine hundred and fifty five thousand twenty five dollars and ninety cents. The balance that is remaining to be collected is three hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and sixty nine dollars and sixty one cents. And our collection percentage during us of May is ninety six one six four percent. For our sales tax collections and annuals collections were just paid in June. You also have a copy of this in your packet. Annuals collections were um, three hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and forty nine dollars and seventy six cents. That brings our year today collections to two million nine hundred and sixty eight thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars and thirty eight cents. The schools allocation of the sales tax, their portion. And I'll call that all that on there. The proportion that was uh, collected for April was sixty thousand sixty five dollars and nine cents. Which brings our year to date total to six hundred and nine thousand six hundred and four dollars and fifty eight cents. Of that, they still have the available balance of one hundred and sixty four thousand one hundred and ninety four dollars and sixty three cents. For the uh, quarter cent allocation for public safety. As of April, we have, uh, if in the month of April, we collected twenty eight thousand three hundred and sixty seven dollars and fifty seven cents. This total that we decide today is one billion six hundred and seventy one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and thirty four cents. And then the last item is our vehicle tax collections. The May report is in our packet as well. The main collections were paid in June and in June, sixty eight thousand four hundred and eighty one dollars and thirty one cents. Which brings our year today collections to six hundred and sixty two thousand seven hundred and seventy eight dollars and forty two cents. That is the financial report for today. I do also have, and I can pass copies of this out afterwards. Um, the our appeal and to the N C treasurer's office. And I have that bill there ready to stand to be on. And I'm just waiting for signature at this time. We're just waiting on the audit to be filed. So submitting this. So we'll pass that around for signature. And then also um, the project that Mr. Moreno was closing out, uh, the C D B T, we have a file and. Free list payment that has to be submitted and I will be to update the signature anything else. So I'll just have the sheriff's office as well. Now please, that's it unless you have any questions for me. So much this.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair. First item is the uh, award we like to set in the good award for the nineteen eighty seven Ford fire truck. Uh, that wouldn't get the high business four thousand dollars submitted by his contract and they were full of sports relatives. And to the highest is four thousand seventy five.
I'm hoping you would please. I'm hoping to accept uh, the beautiful thousand replacement.
Second item is just a brief sanitation discussion specifically. Uh, I know a topic of discussion has been uh, the town and its uh, past due bill. Uh, with sanitation, the youngest communications on the town and proposal on how to move forward. Um, so what's being passed out right now is uh, is the new proposal. Um, so the back page is the past due statement. Um, that includes a pretty significant period of time. Um, so twenty three, twenty four thousand dollars. There's twenty four thousand dollars past due as of April thirty. Um, the way that sanitation is currently building um, the town is because those residential and businesses are picked up with the town as. Um, trucks, then there is once the it passes the scale. Um, there is an adjustment to the price per ton to reflect, so half business, half uh, residential. And the proposal from the town uh, is that uh, I think everyone has heard of the sanitation is not aware that the state is actually only a. Business pickup day, so to use Wednesday essentially as our measure for the week. Um, so. For the typical eighty dollars a ton, which is the typical price, uh, to use the Wednesday measure. Times it by three for the week and that's essentially the weekly invoice that we get from the town. Uh, to to have a very clear uh, process for for what is. And as far as the 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 request is, as far as like what what is what is past due. Uh, to essentially adopt this building system and may have hit over the past due that look like that. Um, so what we have done, as we have done is in average, we're taking a fall, summer, winter and spring month. Uh, records are a little difficult to get every single month for the town, but we were able to pull a month for each for Wednesdays. And in the aggregate, that gets us to fourteen six thirty forty. So fourteen thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents. It's what based off that projection, it looks like it would be into the annual. Charge and the town has indicated that they are budgeting. Whatever's if that is, if this proposal is adopted, it is going to be part of next year's budget and the intent is to pay the pay for without issue.
This sad feeling about this situation. As what it costs us.
He does, and he and he feels like it's an accurate, an accurate reflection of of true cost.
Standing board. This proposal for.
And then you can, or the first thing with the new building system and the second. Whether the work elector accept their proposal of fourteen six thirty forty. As essentially paid it full for all asked. Asked about it. And they were telling me to pay that body with this fiscal year, so it is a mission of the budget for them to close out. You have, that's the intent. Uh, is to go ahead and get that closed down and be able to follow.
Um, I would like to approve. This suggestion, if you will. Um. And the amount. Um, for fourteen six thirty forty. As in in full, if a five thirty of this month.
It is a group's front. We have originally built that gap to.
That total the colors is more than one as well. It's 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 significantly less. Um, so there's there's, yeah, there. Their application of the our bill system could be hundred fifty. And this is kind of right in what some of the months we hold what what we were building. So it's very similar. Right. Item number three is a proposed order for uh, a collection for um. Here's the first, the proposed order appointing Trinity Cooper as deputy tax collector for uh. At the end of the fiscal years, the twenty four, twenty five and penalties. So you have that in front of you. So that's the order to allow her to uh, become definitely uh. process taxes toward the remainder of this year, if we're willing to take action. In the, it's spoken out of term, but the first item needs to be appointed Trinity Cooper as deputy tax collector, in her new position. We can go up to eight years, or it can be for four years. The next item is very similar authorization, but this authorizes both Miss Ludwell and Miss Cooper to collect taxes in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and just costs. Fourth item, if we're electing actions, is our view of current being booked that we received, so your request for current being booked was published in Grand Tower. Only one book has been received, so currently, our providers in streaming gas, we are paying two dollars and fifty-two cents. It's a new proposal, came in at one dollar and forty-two cents, a pretty substantial standard, it's less than suburban per day. They did not, there was a discussion, they didn't, they didn't vote.
It's good for one year.
One year. This item is a brief tracking update, so this covered an hour, had we, with Don and Ron this morning, and some thirteen, had a very good discussion with Track County about what their current state of the college at the campuses, what their short-term and long-term goals are for the campus. We got some information from them, haven't had a long chance to sit down and review it, but since the tracking budget, why not, it's just going to be a topic of discussion for the July meeting towards March, I just wanted to provide this information to people, give you a chance to review it, and then we'll make sure to include it on the next month's meeting agenda, so we can talk a little more substance about that. She's got a list of here, tell a number of students, the classes that are actually being taught, some summaries of the kind of the non-traditional classes that are actually, that are being taught, just to kind of see where, and also the requested five-year financials are also the last given business, that we can see where these the expenditures for the Track County Campus or Grand County, or the funds they're purging about the county, how they're being used. So we have any questions before?
I think that's everything that we had asked.
Next item is the Sheriff's Office reimbursement documentation that has been provided by the USDA. So in front of you, you should have, that's perfect. And letter of conditions of community facilities grant for patrol boat and equipment. So this is for the boat that was purchased by the Sheriff's Department. This is a USDA grant that is done as reimbursement, so we now have the documentation that's been provided to us. The USDA wanted the Sheriff's Market to purchase it, then they provided documentation, we submit for reimbursement with all the, the wire documentation, and then the funds are going to be reimbursed. So in this letter of conditions, we reviewed it, so the project budget is on, it's on the second page. It shows that the grant is for eighty thousand dollars, that includes, that's eighty-five percent of the boat fixed equipment, that is the Asian market for storage covered. There's applicant injection of fifteen percent, that is from another, other, other grant funds, so it's not this particular grant, but it's also not, it's, it's, it's just additional grant funds that the Sheriff's Department has received. And this covered, had a chance to review this, it's typical grant requirements, we're going to have the, the information we keep providing. What we need tonight is just an authorization, so there is a resolution, a proposed resolution in front of you. It's very limited, it's sort of, it just says that the board, authorizes the chair and the clerk to execute all the forms necessary, and the forms that were submitted, so that includes a brief letter of intent, just saying that we intend to follow through on the letters of conditions. Request for obligations of funds, providing some brief financial information, and allows for the private parties to sign.
Now, also made a signature on the request for the advance of the reimbursement, so I'll put that into the max well.
Last item is the review of proposed for service contract, this is done on annual basis. The county has made, this, this, made budget line out of funding, the amount that is stated in this contract, it's a, it's a, it should look like this, it probably is, should say Department of Ag Bromhead, Consumer Services. This memorial line is the agreement with for service and that whole sharing, the American County's funds would be sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine, which is already budgeted in this year's fiscal budget, but doesn't include that call sharing, if they were to, a fire.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a chair, but it's not that, we're going to do, and then Eric Grease.
I put my piece earlier, but just want to say, you know, I don't want your job. I appreciate what you do in serving this community, and recognize the person that goes into it. We did, we limited it down on an extremely small scale, where I may ask, so we know that we appreciate you, and if there's any way that we can, of help, please let us know that is clear.
Oh, the, um, the.
Yes.
Oh, the C D B G.
Yeah.
Can you come by my office tomorrow in our mail?
I'm sorry.
Can you come by the office tomorrow?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're.
Just right here in the back of the.
Okay.
Go ahead, get all the stuff ready.
All right, appreciate it.
Ms. Grease?
Thank you. I'm Eric Grease, live up on West Four Hill, and I think you've already discussed this, but I was here in response to the advertisement in the Grand Star, a public comment for the Community Health Block Grant Program, and I just wanted to say a word of gratitude to all the county commissioners, to all the employees of Grand County, for everyone that worked on this, it was very important for the community, and I was very proud for everything that became from this, for everything that came from this, and so I just wanted to use this moment to thank everyone, yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Do we have the other public comment? So, I wanted to ask if coming out tonight, no, do you think you don't show that? Interact with the staff. All, um, numbers in the Ellen Club session, if you got us, one, three, four, five, six, person for conversation, three, four, five, six, trust, you know, you know.